I call the City of Sonora regular council meeting for Monday, November 17, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Sagerstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Levine.
Here.
Councilmember Opie.
Here.
Councilmember Plummer.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Merrill will join us in closed session.
Public comment. The vast array of choices out there, I see we have none. So we will now adjourn into closed session.
No problem.
I'm calling the City of Sonora City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, November 17, 2025 back into session. We gave staff direction during closed session, and now Pledge of Allegiance. Andy, will you lead this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Sagerstrom.
Here.
Vice Mayor Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Levine.
Here.
Councilmember Hoppe.
Here.
Councilmember Plummer.
Here.
And your report on the agenda posting, please.
At 10:03 a.m. on the 14th day of November, 2025, the agenda for today's City of Sonora Council meeting was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you. Any comments on the agenda from the council? If not, I'll ask for a move to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, before we start public comment, I wanted to note a passing. Last Thursday, the city lost Colette Such, a remarkable woman who contributed to the community in so many ways, one can't list them all. She was a woman of high principles, insightful intelligence, graceful language, wicked humor, generous friendship, and incredible culinary skills. Due to a chronic medical condition, she traveled frequently between Sonora and UCSF. I'm grateful that she accepted that challenge with the same equanimity with which she undertook the many challenges here in Sonora. While you hear about her multiple and varied accomplishments from other friends and colleagues, first and foremost, in my experience, Colette served as a city council member from 2018 to 2022. We met when my cousin asked me to host a meet and greet for her election campaign. She encouraged me to get involved in city affairs, first as a volunteer and then as a candidate in 2020. For the two tumultuous years we served together, Sonora was confronted with massive tests to its very existence. First, the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis spotlighted the political, economic, and social inequities that continue to plague our countries, states, counties, and cities. Next, our city administrator left, and the council had little time to find a replacement. Then, with our new administrator, the city proposed and passed Measure Y to ensure the city's financial stability and independence. Finally, the COVID pandemic hit. During those two years, Colette chaired the Social Equity Committee. Composed of individuals of wide-ranging social and political views, the committee meetings were lengthy, verbose, and contentious. Colette listened and led during heated debates on the content and verbiage of a social equity resolution, a document that was passed at a regular council meeting on April 18, 2022. The resolution's existence on our roles has enabled the city to apply for multiple grants, important grants, where such a document is required, such as the Community Development Block Grant used to purchase our Type III and Type VI fire engines, and in current applications for an active transportation grant from the state, a Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Program Grant, and a California Wildlife Conservation Board Grant. These are all incredible, ongoing contribution to our city. While her time as a council member was just one aspect of the many ways she served her community, for me, it is a lasting testament to her dedication to making our small, sweet city a haven for all. Any other council member would like to make a comment?
Yeah, if I could just make a short comment, because it still hasn't really hit me. Haven't had much time to process it. I've just been working a lot, and I just wanted to say that it's like a two-way tie, I think. I was trying to think of who originally approached me to run for city council, and I want to say it's either Colette or BZ Smith. So it's just one of those things. I wouldn't be here without her, and doing this job hasn't always been easy either. And I guess the one thing I'm going to miss most is being able to call her and talk about, you know, getting some advice and just having a tried and true someone with experience to bounce ideas off of. I know that she's deeply loved, and she will be greatly missed.
Yeah, and I hope that all of her other amazing accomplishments will be brought out.
Yeah, I will also just say that she encouraged me to run for city council. I probably would never have if it weren't for Colette, and she helped me immensely running my campaign and just encouraging me and believing in me, and I definitely would not be, wouldn't be here if it weren't for her. So I'm so grateful, and she will be missed.
Seeing no other comments from the council, I will open public comment on non-agenda items. Public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. I'm Katie Dunn, and I'm the president of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to share a few things with you this evening. The parade application deadline was last Friday, and I'm happy to report that we ended up with 92 entries, and that includes Santa and Mrs. Claus. So yay. Tyler and Linda Emerson and myself completed the placement this afternoon of all of the entries, and so the Sonora Chamber will be reaching out to all 91 of them to let them know their number and staging area and all of that good stuff. Last week, the Sonora Chamber sent out two surveys to try to get input from our local businesses and the community about what they would like to see as far as events go for the City of Sonora in 2026. So I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to see those come through. That was with the help of Cole Prisbella. He helped us with the Survey Monkey. We also asked Visit Twomey County and the Blue Zones Project and Tiffany Phillips to help send out those surveys through their social channels. So we're really hoping to get some really good feedback, and I'll be able to come back in January and share those results with you. And then lastly, there is no mixer in November because it's too close to Thanksgiving, but our holiday community mixer is December 16. That's a Tuesday at the Opera Hall. We always co-host with Visit Twomey County, and it's also a time where we share the winners of the Holiday Window Display Contest, as well as Christmas Tree Lane winners for second and third place. And it's also a fundraiser. We'll have a raffle and silent auction to raise money for Christmastown 2026. So we hope you all can be there, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and the rest of you. My name is Jerry Woodward, and I'm on the board for Foothill Pregnancy Center. And this quarter, one of our goals is to be more public. And so we're going to be having an open house. It's going to be on Wednesday, December 10, from 12 to 2. We're going to have, you know, finger food, and just you're going to be able to visit our staff and the rest of the board members. And the most exciting thing is we just won a grant for getting an ultrasound machine. We've had one for 20 years, and we got a brand-new one. So we just want to show it off. And so we just want to extend it, just a way to just saying, hey, come on by, and we'd like to meet you, and just we want to just be more public to everyone in the city. So I have a couple flyers. Would you like me to give these to you? And I've got a couple more. I'll put on the back table here. Anyway, thanks for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
May I speak?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Step right up.
My name is Elizabeth Marum. I moved to Twomey County in 1983, I think it was, and I'm a homeowner here. I just want to speak about Colette Such very briefly. As some of you know, I lived in Africa for many years, and many people in the county I invited to come and see us. Said, I'll take you on a camping trip like no camping trip you've ever had, dodging the elephants, et cetera. Anyway, Colette came. We had a wonderful time. I took her to see some of our HIV prevention projects in the community. She just had such a way of relating to people she'd never met before, and I discount myself very privileged to have known her, and I really want to affirm her contribution to the city council. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mike Lemke. Also, lend my comments about Colette, one of those people who are part of the community and actually one of the pillars. Happy to present two unrelated items. One, I've promised to keep you aware of. This last week, Gary and his wife Martha became brand-new members of our community, part of the Woods Creek neighborhood. It's a, that's the neighborhood that had a lot of troubles early on, and we were able to step in and bring it to completion. We're pretty close, but just another happy family. There's something really special about the process of walking a family through a new home, giving them the keys. I always make sure they have my cellphone number. Seen that exuberance, and it's something that makes all the sweat, blood, and tears and the long-winded process feel actually hand over the final results to the family. It's pretty awesome, whether you're doing it for habitat, for humanity, for a workforce family, for anybody coming into the community. It's a rewarding experience. Second item, last week, we kicked off the start of our Cohort 16 class. This is an apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship training program that we have here. We're at class number 16. It's 10 plus or minus years. It also has been a very rewarding process. We'll be shooting out more formalized announcements, looking for potential students, and always modifying and updating our course curriculum to the needs of the day. But it's the, it's the folks who are looking at making a life transition, people coming from all different sectors. The hands-on sweat equity, building trades, it's a huge tent of different folks. Quite a rewarding work experience when you go home tired and you can see Quite a rewarding work experience when you go home tired and you can see the results standing up in front of you. But we're kicking off number 16 and looking forward to another very successful class. And I'll update you once we get out the information. So please keep your eyes and ears out for any potential candidates you think might be good fits. And it's a lot of people who just might not have found their, their path or their opportunity in life yet. And we've hoped to get a lot of people on a good course. Thank you.
And if I understood correctly, that's open to anyone who is interested in the trades and learning to, learning the skills to build?
Yes, sir. We, it's a partnership with multiple entities, different trade unions, a lot of our local groups. The check is written by the San Francisco Water District, part of the Hetch Hetchy commitment long-term to help build the local trade base. They get a benefit, the community gets a benefit. And for folks that are looking, that haven't found their career path, it's a great opportunity for them to learn something new.
Where do they apply?
I'm sorry. This next class, we haven't given the date, but when I get the applications, I'll bring that in and submit it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question.
The reason I asked was in part was because most of us associate apprenticeship with youths who are pretty much just right out of high school, or at least very young people. And it sounded like you were inviting anyone who lives clean and wants to work hard.
It's a full spectrum. And for folks who have not had a clean living experience but are at that point where they're looking for that clean living experience. Literally, we have a percentage of folks are coming from the justice system, from students graduating from high school who are still trying to find their way. High school, our local high school, has a great apprenticeship program and maybe they want to continue it. It's a way for them to possibly, if they want to go after the, some of the specific labor trades, electricians, carpenters, plumbers of our local businesses. It's, there's a whole lot of opportunity there. So it's a good deal.
Thank you. I'd enjoy learning more about it.
And just to clarify, just because I work with a lot of incarcerated individuals, if you've gone, undergone rehabilitation, you're eligible for this program or participating potentially if you have a criminal record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darlene Baumgarten and I've lived in Twomey County since 1975. And I will be brief, but I do appreciate the opportunity to acknowledge the contributions of Colette, our noble friend. And I was in a personal women's growth group with her for over two decades. And I'm so proud that even though there was a lot of resistance, Colette took the time to write an exquisite social equity resolution for the city of Sonora. And that piece of work really makes me feel proud to be a citizen of Sonora. So thank you for acknowledging her tonight.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we will move on to presentations. We will first receive a presentation from the Central Sierra Economic Development District regarding the Sierra Jobs First Program Update. Alex Bloom, Economic Development Manager, Motherlode Job Training and Central Sierra Economic Development District.
Just testing.
Yes.
It works great. I'm, that's like most things. Well, good evening, Mayor Seagerstrom, council members and staff. It is my pleasure to be here this evening again. Alex Bloom, Economic Development Manager, Motherlode Workforce Development Board in the Central Sierra Economic Development District. It is also my pleasure this evening to introduce Sophia Kaufman, the newest addition to the Business Services Team. I'll let her introduce herself as well.
Hello, thank you for allowing us to speak to you today. My name is Sophia Kaufman. I'm a, I'm a project coordinator with Motherlode Job Training and I assist with the Central Sierra Economic Development District.
Thank you, Sophia. So it has been just over a year since I last presented to this council. I had to go back and check emails and notes and I thought, I thought, I thought that's been far too long. So that, that means that the information that I presented last time really resonated. So it seems like less of a length of time in between that. So this is to say that my hope is to present on more of like a biannual cadence to this council as well as the boards of supervisors for the region. Sonora is one of the member entities of the Economic Development District. So providing education on our opportunities and initiatives is an important part of what we do. So with that all being said, I've got a lot of slides to run through. I'm going to do it as quick as I can and that way we have time for questions, comments, anything like that. So. There goes, we got a little lag time there. So just a quick overview of what we'll be talking about. We mentioned the California Jobs First Initiative update. A lot has happened in the last year, so hopefully I'm able to bring you up to speed. I've got a nice little timeline up there so you can visualize what that process has looked like as well. We'll talk about, a little bit about our infrastructure grant. That is the California Advanced Services Fund. That's that CASF. That's a broadband infrastructure grant. We'll talk a little bit about funding. We'll talk a little bit about our SED's annual report, which generally is something I do in these presentations, but it's kind of boring. So instead of doing that, I've kind of shifted that part of the agenda to kind of provide you a live look of what we've been up to over the past 90 to 120 days. A little bit more interactive and engaging. And then talk a little bit about what we've been doing throughout the region. So. Let's start with California jobs first. So this kind of gives you an idea of where the last two years have been. We're obviously here in November of 2025, working to implement those Catalyst Funding Awards. 39 projects were awarded throughout the region, throughout all of our primary industry sectors, which include healthcare, natural and working lands, agriculture, clean energy, and sustainable recreation and tourism. Some very, very exciting work. And then also kind of alongside that, running in parallel, you see that implementation funding. That is a larger statewide pot of funding. So that will be eligible to all state agencies and entities that were involved in the Jobs First Initiative. That's more for shovel-ready projects. So Catalyst was meant to catalyze new projects, projects that wouldn't necessarily receive funding. The implementation funding is really thinking about projects that are shovel-ready, ready to go. For our region, there is a priority sector that has been identified for implementation funding, which is the bioeconomy, as many of you may be familiar with some of our bioeconomy partners here in Twomey County. So the Workforce Development Board and CSED will be pursuing an implementation funding grant around the bioeconomy moving forward. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, but this is all to say, this has been a long process. We've got about 10 months left in it. It sunsets in September of next year. So we're kind of entering the closeout stages of this very important regional grant. A little visualization of all the different components that have kind of brought us here to today. We started in that planning phase where we did a lot of outreach. This has always been a community-led initiative, so we really focused on engaging the community and developing our regional strategies. Our regional strategy is a living document. So as we kind of work through the next 10 months or a year, we'll be adding to it, making sure that it really resonates with the constituents and industry of this region so that we really have a guiding light, a guiding document for ourselves moving forward out of the Jobs First Phase. I noted those industry sectors, those are our primary industry sectors for the Jobs First Region. The Catalyst Projects, I also noted 39 projects, $9 million in funding. The really important thing to note is that that funding was divided equally across the state. So the state has 13 Jobs First Regions. LA got the same $9 million that the Sierra Region did. So this is a really important initiative. It's the largest workforce and economic development initiative in the state, in the history of the state of California. And that equal division of funds really played a really, a strong part in making this a really impactful project. The little bar graph right under that kind of shows the impact of those projects. Twomey County having 27 different projects that will impact an economic and workforce development. So really, really excited to come back here in six months and tell you the impact of all those projects. And then a year from now, we'll have closed out this grant and I'll be able to provide an impact report to really say what, what those projects did and what the work will look like moving forward. I think it's important also with this initiative to really illustrate what the state is looking for and what they're thinking of for future grant efforts. As I noted, the Jobs First process divided the state of California into 13 different regions. There has been this kind of hemming and hawing over the component of regionality because our region includes Inyo and Mono Counties, which we are currently not able to access without driving six and a half hours one way or the other. So there's been some consternation around the, around the regionality. That is to say that the state is not going anywhere on this component of regionality and the region we've been assigned. There are two major grant initiatives through the state of California. The K-16 Initiative as well as the High Road Training Partnership Initiative. Both ask to align with one of those regions throughout the state of California. So this is to say that we will be bundled in with our partners in the CSED region, which is Alpine, Calaveras, Twomey, Mariposa, and Amador Counties, but also with Inyo and Mono Counties at least till the end of 2028 or 2030. So what, no matter what happens with the new administration, we will be bundled in that component of regionality for grant funding moving forward. So what have Motherlode Job Training and CSED roles been? A lot of technical assistance has gone on in the last year. We've been really working hard to align a lot of the projects within the region with other projects and initiatives that have been going on. A big part of this initiative has been to reduce duplicative efforts. There's so much stuff that goes on in silos. People work on the same projects across the region with no knowledge of what each other are doing. So this initiative really worked to coalesce those projects and really maximize the impact of what's going on within the region. Funding has been a challenge because of the model that the Jobs First Initiative decided upon in this region, which was an equitable model. Lots of projects received partial funding rather than their full request. So we've been working with a lot of projects to source other funding sources, really find the sustainability aspect of those projects. As Sophia mentioned, she has been brought on to Motherlode Job Training and CSED to work as a sector navigator. Her primary focus has been in agriculture, which is not one of our traditional sectors at the Workforce Development Board. But she's done an amazing job really immersing herself in that industry sector. The other two sectors that we navigate for the Jobs First Initiative are the natural and working lands and community healthcare. Very proud to report, we just recently held our health, our healthcare, our natural and working lands and sustainable agriculture conference over at the Chicken Ranch Casino last Thursday. We had an amazing turnout, over 100 people in person with how many people online? So over 100 people attended both digital and in-person. Lots to report out on, we're still coalescing all the data and kind of delivering impact results from that conference. But I look forward to bringing that back to you next time and really talking more about that. Other working things that we've been doing, working groups. So in between these conferences, these large-scale convenings that we've been putting on, we've been working to convene people across the region. Obviously, we live in a geographically dispersed region. The Jobs First Region is over 7,000 square miles and 200,000 residents. So there's probably more cows than people that live in our region. That is to say that we have some challenges with communication. So having that online component has been really important. Obviously, those face-to-face interactions are highly valuable and highly beneficial, but we like to meet people where they are. So really thinking about ways that we can convene folks without having them to travel great distances in order to communicate. We've also developed activation plans. They take the sector strategies from the regional document and really work to think about ways that we can develop tactics and actions based on those. Those are also living documents, just like the regional strategy. So we'll be adding to them, thinking about ways we can activate our regional sectors, ways that we can promote economic prosperity. So I am very proud to report that CSED was awarded a contract under the Jobs First Initiative to youth entrepreneurship throughout the seven county region. The youth outmigration issue is a significant issue for the Central Sierras and this work should address that. So we'll be, we'll be putting on entrepreneurial training in all seven counties over the next year or so, 10 months or so, I should say, with our implementation partner, Sierra Commons, who has really developed a relationship as the trusted messenger in the entrepreneurship space for the Sierra Region. So very, very excited to talk more about this. And the next time I present, we'll have some actual data points. But excited to see this get off the ground and really develop impact to our communities. Kind of tangential to that, we'll be working to develop a youth chamber of commerce with the Twomey Chamber. I think really getting youth involved and engaged in social activities, especially things that develop community are really important. You know, really looking to solve that problem, the youth outmigration and developing those community ties, I think is critical to that. A little bit about our infrastructure grant. So this is another grant we'll be winding down over the next year. The sun sets in December of next year. We've been working really, really hard on this. This has been probably one of the most important grants in my first two years outside of the Jobs First Initiative. Really working with a lot of our partners to develop local infrastructure. I'll give a slide here next on the award amounts and the infrastructure coming to Twomey County and the region. But really, really exciting work. That subject matter expert panel has really worked to convene those partners, bring people together. We see so many times that people may work 10 or 15 miles away from each other, but never actually talk to each other. So the convening portion of this is really, really important. Also, the marketing and outreach portion of this is really important. Developing awareness of CSED and our activities has kind of been critical to our first year and a half, two years with this project. So we've, we've developed a partnership with Cal State Fullerton. And I think I may have initially reported on this in my report out last October. But I'd love to have Sophia talk a little bit about our relationship with Fullerton.
Yes, so we've been working with Cal State Fullerton in one of their capstone classes for marketing. And this is a capacity-building mechanism for CSED in that they are assisting us with expanding awareness efforts across the CSED region, not only for the CASF grant, that was the big focus of the summer when we were doing our speed testing initiative, but also for Central Sierra Economic Development District in a broader sense, right? And so this month, we're very excited. We're doing some entrepreneur highlights for businesses from within the region. In fact, today I just received two inquiries from Twomey County businesses that we'll be doing highlights on. This is one of the efforts that we intend to continue as part of our awareness and outreach efforts via Central Sierra Economic Development District is to not only talk about economic development, community development, and the work that we're doing to serve this region, but also the small businesses that really put this region on the map, right? Our entire economy is supported by them. So we look forward to continuing more of those highlights. But we have been quite grateful to work with CS Fullerton to expand our capacity and also get some really meaningful experience for these marketing students as far as having a real-world client and deliverables. So it's been, it's been great and we look forward to continuing that work.
Yeah, thank you, Sophia. We're actually on our, our fourth cohort of students, fourth or fifth cohort of students. And it's just been a very successful relationship. They've, they've been really tremendous in developing awareness. And November is National Entrepreneurship Month, so go out and support your local business. 91% of our region's businesses have seven employees or fewer. I'd venture to say a lot of those are probably three employees or fewer, a lot of sole owners, operators. So go out and support your small businesses in your community. I do have a note up here, the Golden State Connect Authority, the GSCA, is bringing an open access model to broadband infrastructure for the region. I think it's really important because it provides an element of opportunity and competition within the marketplace. We have a lot of different regions and parts of this region where we only have one internet service provider of note or of ability to use or access. And so the Golden State Connect Authority's model will allow competition. They'll, they'll actually build out the infrastructure and let the internet service providers lease it. And that way, they don't have to pay the upfront cost for the infrastructure. Building broadband infrastructure in this region is terribly expensive, especially if you have to dig underground. So this is a really important model. So I'll kind of highlight some of the awards that are going to be stewarded by the Golden State Connect Authority, primarily those to Alpine and Amador County, thinking about somewhere in the range of almost $65 million. So it will be a lot of money in infrastructure. All these projects will be executed by 2028, so you will see this. This will be real-life impact in our communities. The Twomey Awards, you can see there towards the bottom, mostly kind of focusing on 108 and 120. And then that Twomey 1C is more of kind of an expansion of a more metro network. And then that Tuolumne one C is more of kind of an expansion of a more metro network. There has been some advocacy to expand those awards. There's a round two for these awards coming up here in the next month or so. Um, so we're trying to advocate for, I shouldn't say educate, uh, to bring more awards to Tuolumne County. This speaks a little bit to our awareness campaign and the impact of our students from Fullerton. On the left side of the graph, you see before our summer awareness campaign. On the right, you see after we started it. So we have really done a great job at delivering impact, driving awareness to CSU. I just wanted to kind of highlight this because they have done a really impactful, uh, job, meaningful job with this work. Okay, so funding sources and I sent this, you know, three or four weeks ago and we have updates. So I walked into this role just under two years ago with one grant, that Advanced Services Fund Grant for five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Since then, everything up on the board has been an award to CSU via our team's applications. Um, very, very exciting work. That Department of Labor, that DOL Healthcare Grant is working to get, um, augmented so it can support natural and working lands as well as healthcare. The rural EV charging opportunity, we were actually awarded last Thursday in the amount of four million dollars. So that will provide seventeen new EV charging locations throughout the Central Sierra Region. The Prop Four funding, that is for climate resilience and wildfire hardening for our communities. That is looking very, very strong. We've had lots of conversations with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy about our proposal, which focuses on workforce and economic development as one of the primary components of climate resilience and forest stewardship. So it's a very innovative proposal. They haven't really seen anything like that before, so we're, we're really excited to see where that goes. And then that implementation funding, that's what we talked about at the beginning with the Jobs First Initiative. We'll be submitting our first kind of pre-application here in about two weeks with the final application due at the beginning of January. That will also support kind of that climate stewardship or climate resilience for stewardship, more of the actual businesses. This is, so the Prop Four funding is workforce and economic development. Implementation will actually support businesses in growing and, and being able to develop their business plans. So this is all to say, in just under two years, we've ten X the budget for CSU just about, so not bad. I want to do a quick highlight. So this is generally where I would lead in and I would say, here's my annual report out for the comprehensive economic development strategy, which is my core competency. That's, that's the document that guides my work. It is the strategy that says, these are the things that we need to do to promote economic prosperity through the region. And then there's a bunch of checkboxes and I have to say, I did this and I did this and I did this. Well, that's kind of boring. So I wanted to give you guys an insight into what we've actually been working on for the last four to six months. Sierra Industry is a big part of that. Um, Sierra Industry is looking to become the comprehensive landing page for both industry and job seekers in the Sierra Region. This is something we launched about three months ago, two or three months ago, August. Yeah, three months ago. Um, and really are working to develop to be that trusted source of information for industry and job seekers. And I would love for Sophia to talk a little bit more about Sierra Industry.
Yes, so one thing that we hear across the board regardless of sector, regardless of grant project, is that there's an issue with centralized communication in our region, which is what makes it difficult for partners to stay in active communication, not to mention lack of capacity. But also this is a huge effort for us to eliminate silos. So what you see here, sierraindustry.com in its current form, um, is a very foundational, uh, version of this website. And so at this time, it currently represents the priority industries of the region and it provides some, um, labor and workforce data, right? But we're, we have some strong aspirations for this website and that we intend to build out usable tools for industry to connect, to gather data in a single location and for us to report out on ongoing efforts throughout the region for each industry sector. So that's the next phase of the website build will be, um, data collection and then coalescing all that data in a single space for industry. That will start with our, uh, Land Energy Agriculture and Forestry Partnership, which is the LEAF, uh, conference that we mentioned, um, happened, took place last week. And so we are taking the information that we learned from that convening and we are centralizing that for all of our partners. And we have two different partners, one from the east side, one from Amador County, who will be utilizing the data, um, that we gather at LEAF and via these efforts via Sierra Industry to inform their projects as well. So these are the first steps of real action that's coming from the industry partnerships that we are working to form and continue in the region. So we look forward to continued updates with Sierra Industry, um, but there will be more to come in the immediate future for this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sophia. And, and feel free to visit it, sierraindustry.org, correct?
Dot org, yeah.
Dot org, dot org, nope, no problem. So, uh, feel free to type it in, take a look and see kind of the tools and, and the way we have it laid out. Um, this will be again, something we report on, on an ongoing basis and really look forward to becoming that trusted messenger and that impactful partner for industry. We've been working a lot with Columbia College. This is probably no new news to anyone here, but Columbia College is the primary educational provider outside of our high schools for the region. And, uh, really thinking about ways that we can dive deeper into these partnerships and really garner greater impact for the region and for our workforce. One of those projects, or I should say, um, initiatives is the Greater Sierra Forestry Corps. So you see the forestry corps, um, prospective graduates, these folks graduate in about two weeks. This is a industry-driven initiative. So initially, this forestry training program was developed as a year-long program that would get folks to work into any number of forest stewardship careers. Industry said, that's not fast enough. Uh, we need people yesterday. And so we developed a sixteen-week program that only, not only gives certificates, so they end up with a Hazwhopper and OSHA certification and other industry, um, recognized certifications, but also skills and training in a number of different fields. So fuels reduction, chainsaw operation, and we have pathways for heavy equipment use. Um, these folks are in such high demand that they graduate on a Friday and they're hired by Monday. Um, and industry says, we need to double the capacity of the program to support our ongoing work in this field. So this is to say that a big portion of that Prop Four funds will go to continue this work. This is the last funded cohort that you're seeing up here on the screen. And so continuing this work with Columbia College will be really, really important. This program has, has been so, so meaningful to so many lives. This gets people out of low-wage jobs and promotes them to family sustaining wage jobs, which is the goal of the Workforce Development Board and the Jobs First Industry. Not just get people into jobs, get people into jobs where they can actually sustain themselves and thrive is so, so important. Another impactful partner, Hartwood Biomass. So we've been working with Hartwood on a number of different programs and initiatives. Um, they have been with Motherlode Job Training and CSU since the very beginning. Uh, CSU actually wrote the business plan to get Hartwood from Oregon to Tuolumne County. Worked with RCAC and HCD to develop the grants that would actually promote their initial sustainability. And they utilize us for a number of job training tools as well. And these pictures, you may be wondering, uh, these pictures are from when we had the California Workforce Development Board come and visit us. This is quite a great honor. This is the first time that this happened. So we had the executive director and staff come and actually visit some of our projects and initiatives within the Sierra Region. You know, kind of allowing us the opportunity to highlight all the good work that we're doing. Um, so yeah, uh, Hartwood does a great job in the community. They hire people from the Greater Sierra Forestry Corps, which we heard, uh, we saw on the prior slide. They utilize Motherlode Job Training for a number of upskilling and training pathways. They hire people from our rehabilitation grant where the people learn welding skills. So they're actually bringing people in who are previously incarcerated to work in their facility. So just so many different intricate connections with the Workforce Development Board and our Economic Development District. They're the model for what we really want to see in this region because we are such an underutilized tool in many different places and, and really kind of exist. They, they exemplify what that partnership could look like. Adventist Health is another one of those partners. Uh, they work with us on a, in a number of different programs as well. So kind of hearkening back to the Columbia College portion, they hire graduates from our, our healthcare programs at Columbia College. They also have their own skilled nursing facility here in Sonora. So these are just really, really impactful partners. The operations executive, uh, serves on our Workforce Development Board. Again, the model of what we'd like to see participation and collaboration look like for all our industry partners. Little highlight of our visit over to the east side, as Sophia called it, that's Inyo and Mono Counties. This slide got all messed up, that's okay. Um, really cool work. I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the stuff that's going on in agriculture over on the east side. This is a ten-acre farm and it is the largest production farm in, in your mono counties. Let that sink in for a second, ten acres. So agriculture is a priority sector and, uh, we really look to bring up farms like this and maximize their impact. Another one I wanted to highlight is the Bishop Paiut Food Sovereignty Program. This is another tribal program, part of the Jobs First Initiative and has really worked to address kind of those health disparities of indigenous people. Obviously having a lot of tribal components here in Tuolumne County, the region as well. Again, kind of the working model for what we'd like to see through economic and workforce development. Okay, I'm winding down here, I'm getting to the final stretch. Okay, I know it's a lot and I'm, I'm working through it as fast as I can. So this has been perhaps one of the most impactful tools that I've developed over the last six months. Um, when I came into this role, I always wondered why there wasn't a business attraction tool for this region, right? Why, why aren't we attracting businesses to come, place their businesses, develop workforce and be part of the community fabric here in Tuolumne County, Sonora and the region at large? Well, this all kind of came to a head a few months ago when, uh, we developed a developer pitch deck to kind of have a tool to bring to developers or have a tool ready for when developers come to us. And we've had a lot of spinoff on this. We've revamped the Economic Development Executive Team, now the Economic Development Collaborative, um, with this focus, which is how do we attract businesses to Tuolumne County and the region to develop economic prosperity? And it's no small task, but it is one that is worth taking on and something that we've really taken very, very seriously in developing the tax base. Tuolumne County is in some hard financial times right now. We are not going to be able to cut our way out of that. Developing a broader tax base is one solution to that problem. So I just wanted to kind of run you through what this pitch deck looked like. I'm happy to give this out, this is all public information. I just wanted to kind of give you a look at it and how I've pitched the region. So obviously our primary industry sector, tourism and recreation, this is what drives our economy. So kind of highlighting some of the areas, um, I guess value, you know, thinking about ways that we can bring people with the context of why it's so beautiful to be here, why people come to visit and why they should locate their business here. There's also a focus on workforce. So housing is an issue here in Tuolumne County. Um, we know this, this is not a local issue, this is not a regional issue, this is a state issue. So highlighting the ways that we can support workforce housing, I think is a critical opportunity when we think about developing industry. Policy is also an important factor when businesses are locating. So I really wanted to kind of come here and highlight some of the policies and, um, just the ways that businesses can work more, in a, in a more streamlined way with Tuolumne County and the region at large. So really thinking about ways that we can attract business based on our assets here. And then just, you know, we have abundant landscape, right? So the challenge here in Tuolumne County is seventy-five percent of the land is publicly owned, so let's leverage the percentage that we can. I developed this as a regional pitch deck because what Tuolumne County may lack, Calaveras County may offer. And so the complementary nature of the counties within this region, I think is a really important thing to highlight because one may not be a good fit for a business while the other may. And I really kind of leverage the rising tide lifts all ships kind of mindset with this because I think it's really important because a business developed in Angels Camp, right, or in Calaveras County will bring more traffic to this region. That's, that's what we understand based on visitation statistics. So important to highlight the regionality of this proposal. And that's it. I hope that I was as pithy as possible. I tried to run through this, this is like a half an hour presentation and I think I did it in fifteen or twenty minutes. Happy to answer any questions, happy to send you guys the slide deck. Thank you very much.
Pretty impressive, yes. Um, how about questions from the council?
Not so much a question, just a comment. Um, I love the collaboration with Community College and I'll be the first one to die on the hill saying that the more we can, uh, leverage our relationship with our higher education systems here in Tuolumne County, I think the more economic development we're eventually going to see. I see that as like the most no-brainer pipeline for growth. Um, and I, I highly recommend you continue that, uh, relationship, especially now with, um, President Redwing at the college there. I know growth is like at the top of his mindset, so I just love what I'm seeing. No questions, just, just love it.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. I mean, I think part of the broader idea with that collaboration with Columbia College is to really develop Tuolumne County and this region as the premier destination for forestry training. There are a lot of different initiatives going on, some that I can't quite speak to, that the ink's not quite dry on yet. But this will kind of coalesce that idea of really bringing the attention of the state to this region, especially around forestry, so.
Can't wait to see it.
I'm excited, thank you.
Uh, what, what, sorry. Uh, one thing I've noticed, um, over the last twenty years anyways, um, was that we used to be really heavily dependent on like the logging industry. And since that's kind of faded away, the biomass industry is kind of giving us a chance to get back into there. And a lot of people that were in logging can go into biomass. And I get that, you know, you only, you can only train so many people at once, but where do you see it going in the future? I mean, do you, because I know, I can't remember the name of the company, but I remember there was a biomass company that you had mentioned in this.
Hartwood.
There you go.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't heard too much with them. I know that they got situated and all that, um, and I don't know exactly where they were at, I kind of have an idea in my head. But has things been going good for them? Are they processing now or how is that working?
Absolutely, they're, they're up and running. I think they're like almost to full capacity. There's a couple other pieces of equipment they're looking to implement over the next few months. Um, but yeah, they are located over in Jamestown over by the prison.
Yeah.
Um, and they do amazing work. Um, they kind of take the less value-added portion of, of the biomass. So you think about, you think about a tree, right? And so SPI is going to take the value portion, they're going to take the bottom two-third. Hartwood takes the top third, they take the sticks and the branches and they kind of convert it into value-added products, right? So they make firewood, they make kindling, they make wood straw, they have all these kind of innovative products that they're developing. Um, so they, they've been very, very successful, right? They've grown their staff from seven to fifteen over the last year and are really looking to kind of continue to grow that space. Your question about what the future looks like? Big. Big would be my prediction. I mean, we are, we are leveraging a number of different initiatives and projects that are going to support the bioeconomy here in the region. Um, and I think there is really a strong viewpoint from the state that sees the bioeconomy as a central industry sector here in the Central Sierras. This is to say, we do have the context of commercial timber and I think a lot of those viewpoints and narratives still exist and persist in opposition to the bioeconomy. So the future is big, but narrative is important, right? I think that as we craft the narrative around the bioeconomy, it's around jobs, it's around economic prosperity and development. And it's about climate resilience and really keeping our residents safe, right?
Yeah, no, no, uh, fire safety.
Right. So not only by taking the biomass out of the forest, do we create value, right? We're creating money, we're creating jobs, but we also promote climate resilience. We make this community a safer community.
Well, we also end up with a healthier forest where, I mean, lots of places that is so wildly overgrown, it's tragic. Are you done?
That's it.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, to stay apprised of the latest that's happening in the bioeconomy, that's part of our effort via the LEAF partnership. So please stay tuned into those spaces because we will be having work groups between these in-person convenings to address exactly what you're talking about here.
I would just love to hear more about Hartwood, but we could do that, you know, yeah.
And Rose, uh, would be happy to give you a tour. She has offered it to me and now that I'm free, I would like to go as well.
Yeah, I've been driving past it, I guess, like, you know, when I work out at the prison, but I thought it was like something George Reed was doing. So this is a whole different develop, okay, yeah, so it makes sense, like they've really been, uh, yeah, anyways, another time, but thank you for that.
Yeah, shoot us an email, we'll get you connected. Rose is, uh, she's on the Workforce Development Board, she's a great partner, so thank you guys very much.
And thank you for, for implementing.
Comment and question.
Oh, you've got a question too? No, I was just going to say thank you.
Waiting for my elders and betters.
You have a question.
So a lot of what you are functionally doing parallels what the city would like to be doing. And please reach out to us if there is any way either that we can be more supportive or collaborative on a lot of these things. Because the housing, I mean, it's not really a city issue, but I have been a big proponent of biomass just for forest health and safety, fire safety and the potential to eventually lower insurance premiums. But for, for business and, and the workforce housing, the city I think has a big role to play in that and we would like to work with you, so thank you.
Luckily, we are on the Central Sierra Economic Development District Board, so.
I have never attended, I know, but.
No, I, I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, a really vibrant and very exciting organization to go to the meetings. And maybe they'll be more frequent than quarterly soon.
CSU, CSU Board Meeting this Thursday.
Yes.
There will be donuts.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Oh, that's right. We have, we are, we're moving on on the agenda. All right. We will now receive a presentation on Visit Toolumbe County's quarterly report. Lisa Mayo, Visit Toolumbe County President and CEO. Jen Lopez, Visit Toolumbe County Marketing Manager. And Amariah Richards, Visit Toolumbe County Business Development Manager.
Well, good evening, Mayor Sagerstrom, council members, staff, and community. I'm Lisa Mayo and I am the President and CEO for Visit Toolumbe County. And tonight, we are here just to give you the brief update, just like you already said. But presenting tonight will be Jen Lopez, our Marketing Manager, who I think you all know. But I wanted to introduce Amariah Richards. She is our Business Development Manager. She's been with us for just over a year and this is her first presentation. So I just wanted to ask everyone to be kind. I know you will. Actually, she wanted me to ask you to know. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to these wonderful ladies to let you know some of the greatest things we've been working on for Sonora. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. As Lisa said, I'm Jen, the Marketing Manager with Visit Toolumbe County. And this update tonight reflects our marketing and advertising and destination promotion efforts from July 1st through October 31st. And before diving in, I want to begin by grounding today's update in our scope of work that we presented to you in July. This presentation is intended to show you how the city's allocated marketing dollars are being put into action, how they are, how they are working to promote the city of Sonora, supporting local businesses, and increasing visitation during key travel windows. And everything you see today directly reflects those deliverables. So with that foundation in place, let's begin with a visible, a state, very visible statewide win for Sonora. And as being active partners with Visit California, it provides VTC with lots of high value opportunities that come at a cost that would not be available to us without their partnership. These marketing campaigns and statewide visibility and collaborative opportunities are, they come to us often and Amariah is going to come in and talk to you a little bit about them in a few minutes. But I'll start with this first example. Visit California's release of a perfect day in Toolumbe County video, which got a lot of statewide and nationwide coverage. And Sonora was highlighted with its own dedicated vignette, which I will show. There we go. So the placement earned impressive engagement, 1,500 likes, 26 comments, 25 reposts, and 108 shares. These results reflect only Visit California's Instagram posts. They don't reflect the visibility and the reach, the shares they got from other organizations sharing this video, other community members and such. So very impressive numbers. This is significant because it places Sonora in front of Visit California's massive statewide and nationwide audience, positioning the city as a must stop within the larger storyline of the county. This boost in statewide visibility also complements our own local marketing reinforcing Sonora in the minds of potential visitors. So while statewide exposure is incredibly powerful, we also make sure Sonora shows up in publications for nearby travelers that they use to plan their trips. And so this brings us to print advertising, which remains an essential part of our strategy. And we choose publications that closely match our target demographics, including regional families, lifestyle travelers, and outdoor enthusiasts. This quarter, we are running a Sonora Holiday Focus ad, as you can see on the screen, in 209 Magazine, San Joaquin Magazine, and the Adventure Sports Journal, which has a space in the larger countywide ad. This particular issue of Adventure Sports Journal that's out right now does have quite a significant feature of Toolumbe County in it. So we were very happy to be part of that. So print gives us a strong brand presence, but travelers also, of course, search, compare, and book online. So it's essential that we meet them there too. So extending reach to complement print increases conversion opportunities. We invest in digital strategies that incorporate a large, broad activation through our advertising agency, Madam Media, and regionally focused in-house campaigns. So there on the left, you can see a couple of examples of our advertising, our advertising agencies, ads with Google Performance Max ads, which are highly, highly effective. And we can actually see some return on investments on those particular ones. These two focus on visiting Sonora in, in the fall. And then also more locally, we have, we just, last November, last Thursday, we released this particular email with San Joaquin Magazine and it went out to 15,000 of their subscribers. And while our agency supports large scale digital activation, we also run targeted in-house campaigns to reach regional dry market audiences and at the exact moment that they're making plans. And here's a couple of examples on the right of some in-house Facebook advertising. These had goals to drive directly to either the shop, the Sonora Sidewalk Sale event page on Visit Toolumbe County's site, or onto the visit sonoracalifornia.com site. And on the left there, there are more examples of our broader, our broader ads on Pinterest and Facebook that are via our marketing agency. So all of these initiatives and layers work together to drive one shared outcome, increased visitation and interest in Sonora. And we see the reflected, we see that reflected clearly in our website performance. Before I show you the website performance, let's go back to this. We are also currently running a ad on our billboards that are located in Riverbank on Highway 108 and Manteca on Highway 120. Right now, they're focusing on the Sonora Christmas Parade. These started running on Friday, the 14th and will run through the 28th. These will equivalent, these are equivalent to 8,500 daily impressions and they take about half a visit to Toolumbe County's inventory on those allotted billboards. So now back to the web visits, which was pretty impressive for this last, past several months to Visit California, california.com with 5,223 unique sessions. And that was a 27.65 increase year over year. The signals that our messaging is reaching the right audiences and we're diving deeper, who are diving deeper in explanation of Sonora as a destination. Before I hand it over to Amariah, I just would like to highlight a couple of projects, special projects that are worth mentioning. One is that we just released the Toolumbe County Veterans Memorial Trail. And it is a new self-guided mobile trail honoring the veterans, active duty, and our first responders across the county. It highlights memorials, monuments, and points of significance that residents and visitors can follow and learn the stories behind each location and experience the county through a meaningful and reflective lens. There are three locations on the trail that are in the city limits of Sonora. And just last week, we welcomed Cody Starks from Good Day Sacramento and he did several live segments from a handful of the locations that are located on the memorial trail. He also got a special treat of being able to go into the Toolumbe County Veterans Memorial Museum and speaking with Steve, the curator there, and he was very thrilled to have that opportunity. So just one moment, speaking about mobile trails. Due to low business interest, we have reallocated dollars that were originally planned for the Panorama Trail that was part of our scope of work, that we have reallocated that to high value familiarization trips, which Amariah is going to talk about. And just before we came over here tonight, we learned that Toolumbe, the Toolumbe County segment of California Live on NBC Bay Area will be airing on this Thursday at 11:30 on NBC Bay Area. This crew was out here a couple of weeks ago, going throughout the county, including several stops here in Sonora to film this segment. So we're very excited to see that come on the TV. And it can be streamed, rather, on their website. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amariah, who will share more about these efforts and the exciting film fam activations that we have experienced.
Hello. I would like to apologize in advance. I do have some lingering congestion going on. So I'm going to try to get through this presentation without popping. So wish you luck. And just for reference, Jen was referring to the paranormal trail that you guys were hoping to see and everyone was excited about. But unfortunately, we did not get the participation from local businesses that we were hoping for. So like she said, we did decide to focus more on these familiarization tours. And with that, for those of you who are here that do not know what a fam tour is, a fam is short for a Familiarization Tour. And that is essentially a preview trip designed to introduce our destination to travel professionals such as writers, influencers, travel agents, and tour operators. We invite these individuals to experience Toolumbe County firsthand by visiting key attractions, staying in local lodging, enjoying our dining, shopping, and experiencing our lovely outdoor activities. In many cases, we either host them directly or we partner with organizations like Visit California or Gold Country Visitors Association to co-host, or we hire content creators to ensure strong professional deliverables. After their visit, these professionals share their experiences through articles, social media, or by recommending our area directly to their clients. This exposure helps raise awareness of Sonora and the greater county and encourages future visitation. This initiative remains one of the most cost-effective ways to reach new audiences through trusted voices. Visit Toolumbe County had the opportunity to partner with Visit California to host travel and nature enthusiast Alex Setman. Alex was here on August 9th through 11th and her audience reaches over 176,000 Instagram followers, showing a steady and healthy growth rate of over 3%. Her filming locations included downtown Sonora, which I was especially excited about this one because Alex got the opportunity to visit during one of our second Saturday events. Alex also visited the Armory, Indigenous, and hiked the Dragoon Gold Trail. Although Alex visited several destinations during her contracted fam with Visit California, I did notice that she did a lot more content coverage in our destination and, and much more than what she was contracted to do with Visit California with the other destinations. And that shows me just how much she enjoyed being here. And then I'm going to play a little highlight of her time in Sonora. And as you can see on one of her posts where she did mention several businesses in Sonora, just the types of views that she gets on her channel or page. And next we have Maddie Edmonds. Visit Toolumbe County hired social media influencer Maddie Edmonds to participate in our Public Relations Panel discussion led by our PR Representative Laura, excuse me, Lori Armstrong-Gossi at our annual Tourism Summit and Partner Showcase. Maddie is based out of Sacramento and her relatable and down-to-earth content has allowed her to reach an audience of over 100,000 followers on Instagram and over 76,000 followers on TikTok. As a Sacramento, excuse me, as Sacramento being a targeted drive market for Toolumbe County, VTC strategically hired Maddie to stay after the summit for a curated experience through our beautiful region, highlighting fall activities in the Sonora area. And we did host Maddie October 16th through the 19th. And Maddie's itinerary included visiting the Armory and Indigenous Reserve during their annual fall festival. And she also strolled through downtown Sonora, exploring local shops and bookstores like the Thirsty Prospector. Okay, this one's a big one. The Race Across California Super Fam is a Visit California initiative that brought more than 50 top European travel agents to experience California through themed self-drive itineraries. These agents sell US vacation packages overseas. So hosting them is one of the most direct ways to influence future bookings. Toolumbe County and specifically Sonora was selected as an overnight stop, giving us the chance to showcase our UK agency representatives leading the group. We had five Irish tour operators plus our UK agency representative, Black Diamond. And these representatives work for American Holidays, Cassidy Travel, and travel counselors, all of whom are already selling California and Yosemite vacations. I just wanted to take a moment to point out that there are so many important reasons why these types of hosting, or excuse me, hosting these types of fams are extremely important to us. For one, the high value exposure. These operators directly decide which destinations appear in their travel itineraries. Featuring Sonora can lead to hundreds of new international visitors every year. And we all know that international travelers tend to stay much longer and spend a lot more money. Excuse me. Market alignment. Ireland and the UK are strong markets in California already. So by hosting these operators, we position Sonora as a welcoming, convenient visitor, excuse me, convenient getaway to Yosemite and the High Sierra and not just a pass-through stop. And the last important reason is competitive advantage. Many existing itineraries route visitors through other Yosemite gateway towns. Hosting this group allowed us to show our historic downtown lodging and authentic Gold Country experiences that can be included in future packages. Being invited to participate in this initiative is a major win for Visit Toolumbe County and it reinforces Sonora's growing visibility in the international market and opens the door for meaningful, long-term business. And I just wanted to point out Mr. Tyler Somerset and Lisa having a hosted dinner, welcoming our group at the Armory for their reception. Oh, oopsie. Okay, this one is our veteran food and travel journalist that we just hosted in, just a couple of weeks ago. His name is Ron Stern, also known as the Global Gum Shoe. He is a culinary-focused media writer. Ron has more than 25 years of experience with articles published in major outlets like the Los Angeles Times, Chicago Tribune, and the Shape Magazine. His current roles include hospitality editor for RealFoodTraveler.com, which reaches about 567,000 readers. which reaches about 567,000 readers monthly. And he is a travel columnist for 50-plus Marketplace News, which reaches more than 1.2 million readers across digital and print channels. During his time in Sonora, he stayed at the Sonora Inn. He had the opportunity to meet one-on-one with Jen Edwards at the Armory to learn how to, excuse me, to learn how its modern approach to hospitality has helped energize downtown Sonora and support the economic growth. He also visited one of our newer businesses, Big Wood Brew Works, hard to say that one, meeting the founders Glenn and Haley to learn their story and tour the brewery and experience a tasting. This visit was designed to secure traditional writing coverage that highlights Sonora's emerging culinary identity and the people leading its evolution, helping position Sonora as an authentic and evolving food and craft beverage destination. Okay. Oh, lovely. We just wanted to thank you all for your continued support and open up this time for any questions.
Questions from the council? I mean, it's certainly comprehensive. And coming from a marketing background, I know how hard you've worked to get these results, and they're very impressive. So just keep those people coming.
Yes.
Yes.
We will.
You sure? No more questions? I guess one here.
Just to note how much we appreciate working with you. And the relationship is strong and we appreciate it.
Likewise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will now receive a presentation from Prisbola Advisors to share the Economic Development Strategy Outline Recommended for the City of Sonora. Tyler Somerset, Community Development Director, and Cole Prisbola, or maybe just Cole. Yeah?
All right. Madam Mayor, members of the council, while we pull up Cole's presentation, this is just the latest installment in our economic development strategy that we've been working on. And we've checked in with you a couple of times along the way. And this will be a big one, just to outline the objectives and the action items that we're anticipating to take us through the next couple of years. So Cole will kind of walk us through the outline of the strategy itself and will be all ears as far as making sure we're on the same page with you. So with that, Cole, we'll kick it off to you.
Ten objectives, I can hardly wait.
It's gonna get busy. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So coming back tonight to talk about the economic development strategy that we've been discussing. As Tyler shared, I came recently to share about the city of Sonora and talk about demographic data, kind of talk about the region. Shared that we did a survey, which is now like 480 responses from city residents, community members. And this is now an accumulation of all that I've heard, all that I've lived, and kind of the next steps in how we can move forward. It was great actually to have the Central Sierra Economic Development District here. You will likely hear almost an echoing or a mirror of some of the language they were talking about. So this will be almost like a reiteration of what you just heard. Last thing I want to share before I move forward is both interactive. So hopefully, as we get through the 10 objectives, if something strikes you as no, no, don't do that, or yes, absolutely, or you just want to have a comment, please feel free. We're going to get through the 10 objectives, but this is an opportunity for you really to guide those 10 objectives. And final piece is, I've shared at our last presentation, this is not another economic development plan. We have the Central Sierra Economic Development District, Sierra Jobs First Plan. We have a SEDS Plan. City of Sonora put out a plan in 2020. The idea is this is now a toolkit. This is a strategy. This is an implementation plan for the remainder of my contract and then a path forward for city staff, depending on how my consultancy ends. So moving forward. The proposed table of contents, the idea of the plan, is it's really a very simple front. We're just going to have a message from the city administrator to kind of outline what I just shared with you for the community members who may have not heard these presentations or are coming in fresh to the plan. We'll talk about briefly the current conditions and challenges. So this will be a very kind of one, two-page summary of what we've heard in the City of Sonora Plan, economic development plans, just kind of a reiteration to set the stage for if someone's never read that before. And then stage three is to show that, yes, we are having a plan that's focused on the city of Sonora, but we acknowledge and recognize that we are part of a larger regional system. Kind of heard Alex discuss that piece. And it allows us to use this also as a springboard and template for moving forward with larger state or federal or partnerships for government funds. Four and five, this is where the meat of the plan is. Four is really a quick scan table. So to wait for the community members, city staff, city council to just have the checklist to say, is this happening? How's this look? How do we really quickly understand what is the full objectives? So those are the 10 objectives that we're going to go through. And those 10 objectives are not going to be any surprises. They're business attraction tools, business retention tools. And then some of the things that we've heard through community surveys, interviews with many of the council members, and interviews with partners like Central Sierra Economic Development District. Again, that is the majority of what we're going to be talking about. And six and seven, oh, look, I put appendix twice, will really be the outline and show that we've heard that there are problems. There's heard that these are what the community members want to see and be able to attach like the community survey responses and have references towards the SEDS or Sierra Jobs First Plan. Again, the action items and the objectives, they're not going to be without context. Every single action item will reference back to say, look, we have this attraction issue. This is why we think it's an important one. Or here's an issue that's been raised in the SEDS Plan. This is why we think this is an action item to go after that. So objective one, business attraction. This is an obvious one. This is how Central Sierra Economic Development District spends a lot of their time trying to understand, bring in those pitch decks. But how do we now focus it in just on the city of Sonora? So the idea is to create a select Sonora campaign. So very similar to what Central Sierra Economic Development District was talking about, we would propose and have a select Sonora website. It's a landing page outside of the city that allows us a little bit more flexibility to show demographic data, have a kind of an interactive dashboard that shows tools and resources of why a business would choose the city of Sonora. That would be then wrapped into a larger attraction strategy. I've always shared that my philosophy attraction strategy is not a large kind of shotgun approach, but really targeted and focused. This is also echoed in the Central, or the Sierra Jobs First Plan, as Alex and they outlined. We have kind of natural resources, healthcare as targeted focuses. And so no surprises there. That is where we will start heading towards. But also including, because we are a city, we do have some requirements and interest in helping with the retail selection. Additionally, kind of easy, no-brainer ones is an action item. Action item is to create a one-page recruitment sheet. We've already been in the process of creating one of these actions and one-page sheets to try to attract developers. So we've kind of walked through the process. So this is really another easy action item. They kind of range in short-term, long-term planning strategies. We'd also propose that there be outreach events to potential investors and firms, very focused on our attractions. And then annually, I've brought before you a list of businesses that are potential fits for the city of Sonora. So annually update that list. So again, the way that this would work is this is our first objective. There'd be action items. And the plan would essentially outline to consultant, to city staff, step one, here's what you need to do to make a select Sonora website. Step two, here's how you implement it. Step three, so it's really an honest-to-gosh guide of here's what we're going to do and why we're going to do it. Objective number two, again, the obvious ones, business retention. So how do we ensure that those businesses that are here, both box stores or downtown retail, how do we encourage them to stay and give them the tools that they can feel encouraged and have resources to understand what's next? So quarterly vacancy inventories, this isn't something that's already been discussed, but memorialize it and set a path forward. So have a choice, here's the tool, or here's the simple Excel spreadsheet that we're going to update on a quarterly basis. Make it a task that the city or a city staff member or consultant takes quarterly to make sure that if the city gets a phone call, it's not a, let me, let me double check, let me get back to you. It's here's what's available and let me tell you some options, or here's how to get involved. Then also a way to track and allow the city council members to feel like you have a stronger understanding rather than kind of the anecdotes of how the city of Sonora is doing in downtown, but kind of create a scorecard. So how can we track how occupancy through storefronts are going? What are foot traffic and how businesses are turning over? So kind of creating ourselves a little scorecard to say, are we doing better than last quarter? Are we doing better than last year? So a way for you to track. Also partner with resources that are already available, like small business development centers or the Central Sierra Economic Development District, to have workshops annually. So these are things that have already been done. But how do, again, memorialize it and make it something that the city of Sonora is really encouraging and leading in those efforts? And then finally, a parking encirculation, kind of improvement memo. So how can we continue to have that conversation about downtown parking that continually comes up as we start to talk about economic growth downtown? Continuing on with business retention, two more. One of the big things, we always get questions from business owners, especially our downtown small business owners. How do we access funds? Let's compile, let's distribute and make a full program. I think Central Sierra Economic Development District already probably has one of those. And the region probably has one, but what is specific to the city of Sonora? And then finally, just having some sort of metric. What is our goal? And this one would be to refer 10 of our local businesses per year to the low job training. They have the resources that can help them develop their workforce, guide them towards accessing funds and being a resource of business consultancy that maybe the city of Saff do not have the capacity or resources to do. So again, these are not items that just the city and staff or city consultant can take, but the city can partner. As you've heard, there's a lot of action already occurring, but how do we memorialize that partnership? Objective three is how do we work on policy incentives that help encourage business owners or investors to consider the city of Sonora? So this is when we start to get a little bit more conceptual. How can we use the transit occupancy tax in a way that encourages redevelopment? So again, this isn't saying that we are going to do any of these potential suggestions, but how do we start to work with the city and the city council members to understand, is there also other possibilities of using those TOT funds? Another one that is a little bit, one that we haven't discussed at the city level is a tax revenue sharing policy. So the idea is we aren't competing with just the Central Sierra. We're also competing with the state of California or regions across the state. And so how can we stand out? And so one of the ways that we can stand out is creating a way to encourage sharing revenue. And so how do businesses speak sharing revenue? And so this is an idea of, do you want Trader Joe's to come? And here, we can start to talk about how do we share tax revenue upfront? Yes, we'll lose out on some of the first two, three years, how it works. But then you have Trader Joe's in your community. So you're ready to talk. Go ahead.
So that, I didn't know what tax revenue sharing meant, and the explanation is very helpful. Thank you.
And I will know.
That, I mean, it's a concrete way to say, how do you attract? I mean, a lot of places do it for stadiums and stuff like that.
Exactly. And so how can you implement it on a local city level? One thing of note is there is actually an assembly bill. So if you're worried about, is this legal? Or is this something we can even discuss? There is an assembly bill that is directly related to tax revenue sharing at the state level. Happy to give you that. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head. Again, no-brainer one, like housing incentives. How do we adopt incentives that actually help to attract moderate income units? So how can we discuss policies at the Community Development Department level that will actually encourage and move some houses? Then not only do we create a guide, but again, release that guide, right? So make sure that there's a way to share it, get it into the hands of developers and use our partners to market it to potential businesses that might find that of interest. And then one that's come up through conversations with the council and city staff is bringing things digital. So how can we work as a unit to start to implement online payment systems or bring permitting processes into the digital age? Objective four, this is going to be a very strong mirror of what Visit Tuolumne just shared. And again, it's not necessarily one that the city of Sonora is going to pursue on its own, but memorialize and try to take a step further with Visit Tuolumne to make it more focused into the city of Sonora. So how do we, this is something we brought up at the first meeting. How do we move beyond that city of Sonora is just a gold rush town? Or you come visit to see our historical culture? How can we kind of rebrand and bring our future into our present? So I've had many conversations with your council, had conversations again with Central Sierra Economic Development, Visit Tuolumne, on what that could look like. And so this would be an opportunity in the future to start having a conversation of what's next? What, how else can we market the city of Sonora? We've discussed, in addition to that, we have the Christmas Parade. We have Second Saturday. But how can we work with our downtown businesses and use the Motherlode Fairgrounds for one large anchor event? Through conversations again with you all and our partners, we've had conversations about motorcycle events or large fishing events, or hosting a large mountain bike event, or multiple other types of events that would attract not just one day in-and-out visitation, but multiple night with affluent visitors that use that activity and would stay in our community and spend dollars. And then finally, partner as we do with the Visitor Bureau. Keep moving on. Objective five is another one that continues to come up. It's about housing. It's about infill development. This is one of the ones that we've also already discussed at a previous meeting. And so the idea is we have a commercial perspective. So essentially, we don't just wait for a business to call us or a developer to call us and say, hey, what's available? We are creating that incentive guide or creating that perspective, prospectus that we can send to them. So the idea was, we talked about Child's Drive. We talked about San Gwinetti. We talked about Mona Way as three infill locations that have partners ready to help us or work with the city of Sonora. So how do we create that material that not just talks about zoning, but talks about infrastructure and that we can use that as a marketing material? So again, memorializing things we've discussed, make it happen. Talk about regional transportation projects. This came up quite a bit in the community survey, talking about the bypass. Not a conversation I'm sure you all haven't had before, but again, memorializing and how it impacts potential economic development decisions. The Tuolumne County Transportation Council, as you saw probably in my Motherlode, they've been doing a lot of active transportation conversations. So again, how do we get involved and make sure that downtown priorities are represented in those plans? And/or leading some of the integration? Because again, in the city, in the community survey, active transportation was a very large component of people asking for safer alternative routes to do the things they wanted to do in the city of Sonora. And then finally, very similar to the commercial prospectus, we would have a housing. So again, how do we outline where are there?
Oh, no. Oh, no.
That was fast. So jumping back in, again, the same idea as the business, but focusing on housing. Where are there opportunities to reach out, share what's available and work with housing developers? Yes.
I remember taking the survey. I don't, obviously don't remember everything that was in it. But when talking about a lot of these things, you know, whether it's the bypass or more housing or more projects, you know, we sometimes get pushback on people that don't want these things. Was that question referenced in the survey?
Yeah, so one of the questions was, how do you? I'm going to paraphrase. How do you feel about growth? Or what is your opinion on economic development growth? The large vast majority, as I shared, was in support to support dependent on like what they're looking for. So surprisingly enough, it was an almost a 75% greater of support for growth or doing economic development activities. So I, I had, anecdotally, I mean, I live in the city of Sonora and I hear a lot of the same things. So I was expecting more of a 50/50 split. But the majority of respondents, as I shared, were city of Sonora residents who'd actually lived in the city of Sonora 10 plus years, so long-term residents. And majority of those respondents were open and interested in growth. Yeah, so we have, and again, for those that are interested, the plan as intended will actually list out all 480 responses or in some sort of summary way, because otherwise that'll be 480 pages, so.
I'd just like to add, I'd love for you to share that data with Toomey County Transit Council. And if you're free tomorrow in the morning Tuesday, please tell that to the board of supervisors because they really need to hear it right now.
Yeah, no, the, the community survey is still open. So if anyone's listening, I haven't closed it just because there's been trickles every time they, that my motherload or posts about an economic development activity like we're doing right here. Survey responses still come in and until I publish this report, I'm going to include them. So yeah, 480 responses at this time. Objective six is about community vitality. It's pretty short at this point, but it's another one that the community is really interested in is how do we encourage activities, encourage ways that allow us to fill a culture of inclusivity and in culture of we want to live here in a culture of we are kind of growing and we're not a culture where our young are leaving and not coming back. So two of the priorities or action items that we've developed to kind of move forward in the short term is one that you've already kind of do, which is pursue the Vision Sonora Plan. But by memorializing an economic development plan, it'll tie us to create actionable items on a yearly basis that we can try to fund one or two of those things that are in the vision in Sonora and then allow the, we get to objective 10, which is going after grant funds, kind of tie it directly to that. So just kind of memorializing, we are going after these amount of Vision Sonora Plan items that are directly tied to community vitality. Again, trying not to recreate the wheel, but know that we have these really strong opportunities and how can we push them forward? And then the other one that came up is childcare after school. As a parent of three kids, it, it actually is pretty difficult to find childcare and to find those after school programs or those TK preschool programs. So this one was pretty interesting, just an inventory of what's that? What are the next steps to understanding if this is a key issue for the city of Sonora? So doing some sort of surveys, doing some sort of anecdotal research to then understand, do we need to put together a community task force on childcare? So really just kind of acknowledging that we heard this significant gap through the survey and then kind of assess, is there a city role? Continuing on, so there's family amenities. So how can we campaign? We've heard a lot from the Visit Toomey. How do we campaign and share with city of Sonora? But how can we work with the city or Visit Toomey to focus in on key demographics that we're trying to encourage to move to our area or to pursue and continue to look into our area? And then finally, one of the things that came up in the Sierra Jobs First Plan, you've brought it up here, is fire insurance. The California Forward Initiative, they've been working on not only creating a fire insurance advocacy plan, but they've also created an advocacy board. So find ways that we can, as a city, continue to pursue fire solutions, but then join and be an advocacy voice at the state level where there's a lot of funds coming. Again, no brainer stuff, but kind of making sure it's a key component of our economic development plan. Objective seven is TOT growth, one that continually comes up. So how can we recruit another hospitality option? There are locations that we can pursue. That'll be wrapped into some of the business attraction stuff, the business perspectives. I think really a strong infill option is hospitality. And I don't think it's out of the realm to find a 25 to 100 bedroom location in a hotel. Yeah.
Okay, that's a bureaucratic way of saying hotel.
Or what's it? The other thing that's very popular to say is a boutique hotel. We'll find a hospitality option.
And how do we go about that?
Yeah.
How do you, whoever's going to do this?
Yeah, yeah, no. So actually, this is one that's really interesting and one that county of Toomey, when I was the economic development director for the county of Toomey, significantly, we saw how this would work, which is I had outlined three industries. That was it. That was what you hired me for. I'm going after these three industries. And maybe it was luck of the draw at the right time, but within one to two years, we had $450 million in investment in hotels. Terra V, Yosemite, Groveland Hotel. Those showed up because Terra V reached out and said, we're interested in locations that have to do with natural resources. Where's the fit? Can you sell us on it? Can you tell us more about this location? And it requires having the right information already in hand. It requires understanding who the players are in those locations so that you can set up the opportunities to create meetings between Terra V and the right county officials or the right property developers or property owners. So that's kind of the role. So the city doesn't necessarily start going and calling. We could probably make a short list and make a few pointed phone calls. But typically, what we would do is we would create the business prospectus that outlines why we think this is the right, the right spot, the right location, kind of give the data points. And then we would work with the partner who owns the property. And, and the example would be like Mona Way, Sonora Area Foundation owns the property. So how do we partner with Sonora Area Foundation to encourage what we're looking for or how to encourage development to happen there? This is one I've, I've talked to Melissa and Chris is currently there, there's tools that are available. I think they're, they're using an Air DNA or an Airbnb kind of backend tool. But I think there's, when you look at the TOT revenue from short-term rentals versus the number of Airbnbs that are available to rent, there potentially is a disparity. So this is an action item, one that is currently being pursued. And so again, memorializing some of the work that's already been done. And then finally, one of the things that I think helps city council members to understand and make decisions is again, understanding more data. So this final one would be reporting to the city council members to understand how each year is compared to last year and how it's developing quarterly. Two more, three more. Objective eight is workforce. Again, nothing that is a surprise considering the Central Sierra Economic Development District does a lot of this work. And you're going to see an exact tie, which is Alex brought up natural resources. They've already been doing a lot of work with Columbia College. But how can the city of Sonora encourage and facilitate locating some sort of career technical education center in an anchor location in the city of Sonora? It doesn't have to be downtown. It could also be a potentially empty retail location. But how can the city of Sonora encourage continued partnerships with a community college or UC to pursue putting in some sort of natural resources training center and have it located, bringing that draw? That would require a feasibility study. So that would push that out into 2027. And then going on, we would again have data that allows you to understand what the workforce is looking like, probably partner with Central Sierra Economic Development District, who already collects a lot of that information, but make it very specific tailored to the city of Sonora. And then finally, as I think, Mary, you stated, we actively participate and make sure that we are participating in not only a model of job training, but also having a presence and working with the community-based organizations like the Toomey County Business Council or the Sonora City Chamber to make sure they know and acknowledge that not only are we referencing them in the economic development depart, or economic development plan, but we are attending and participating. Finally, one that came up with council members was, what does it mean for city growth? Clearly, the city of Sonora is at a juncture of there's only so many locations to have infill development or continue to grow, both housing and commercial development. So what does it mean to grow? And so one of the things that the city of Sonora can pursue through an economic development lens is an annex feasibility study. So again, that's offering a huge kind of decision, but it is one that allows us to understand where does, where does the city of Sonora go in the next decade, next 20, 30 years? The one thing I want to note is one of the comparable, again, I think I brought this up in the last meeting, very comparable city that did both an annex study, then eventually annexed and did an urban growth plan all at the same time was the city of Bend in Oregon. And in the 1980s, city of Sonora, city of Bend were almost near identical. But if you look at city of Bend's trajectory, both population, who visits, how many people visit, it's drastically different. So one of the ways that city of Sonora can look forward and look for how the next decade, again, 30, 20, 30 years, is an annexation feasibility study and an urban growth plan. And then as that develops, understanding that it takes a, takes a village and so have some sort of community engagement and not do that in a silo. Finally, objective 10 is sustained economic development funding. I may not be here, even at the end of the next year, I'll be in the city of Sonora. But what does it look like to have a consultant that can continue on these efforts? Or how does it, that the city of Sonora can receive funding to then fund internal staff positions? So that's the goal. So one of the goals is to create an annual funding matrix. It's not a hard task to do, but you go out and say, how can we use community development block grant funds or Sierra Jobs First Plan funds to not only pursue projects, but also fund potential positions to run this economic development plan? We would, the goal is to at least submit two grant applications each year to find funds at minimum. And then again, also explore options for dedicating a local economic development fund. And that can be more complicated than easy when you, especially when you're talking about tight general funds and pre-allocated Toomey or transit occupancy taxi funds. But again, it's something that city of Sonora should and can do to explore how to fund such a position. So wrapping up, there's 10 objectives. Those 10 objectives are going to have action items that a consultant or the city, in terms of city staff, can do in partnership with local organizations already doing the work or find ways that we can do it on our own and push things from the government level. So the idea is that this plan won't sit on a shelf and collect dust. It's literally a plan that the community development director or the next city manager can open and say, it's time to do this task. And then there's a step-by-step process to implement each of these action items. And then it also outlined for you some of the key metrics that you would look for to say, okay, this one's obvious. In terms of targeted grant applications, has the consultant or has the city staff member done two external grant applications? So there's a way that both the city council can have some accountability, but also the community can see, how is this working? So that's the idea of the economic development strategy.
Questions from the council?
So I had some very poignant questions before you started, but you've answered a lot of them as you went through and elaborated on the outline.
Hi.
So from, from, you said, short summary. So is there actually a plan with all of this detailed out?
No, because I did not want to get too far ahead of you. So I have, I've created the objective and action items as you see them. And I have started to formulate what I would think would be the next step or potentially what a metric would be. But no, I did not want to get ahead of the board or the council, excuse me, the council, on fleshing out an entire economic development strategy without input. So that's what I'm here today, to make sure that I'm on the right path and not completely going the wrong way.
So I really appreciate you including metrics in your, both your presentation and the plan because your predecessor at the county sort of supplied his own metrics or lack thereof. And he was a fine candidate for, in a lot of ways, but we never knew what was actually being done because there was no measuring in place. And we need to, I mean, I don't know where we will be in two years, whether I'll be on the council or not, but that's something that we need to institutionalize for this council. So speaking more to you, but.
No, I agree with Mark 110%. I think any, whether it's government, business, whatever, if we could sit here and talk all day about how hard it is to build or how nobody wants to build anything, but whenever you look at the numbers, it's 75% of the community wants, you know, grow. That says a lot about, you know, we're not, maybe we're, maybe we are in the silo and we're not listening to what's actually out there. So thank you.
Yeah, we, we sit up here all the time talking about need, but how about what the people want?
Well, and when the people want what we want, that's an even better thing.
And 75% is pretty staggering.
Then sometimes that 20, well, actually probably 5% is the squeaky wheel. So it gets all the attention and needs to be paid attention to, but also be taken in perspective.
I would say the most, you know, eye catching, or I guess there's two. One of them is the career technical training collaboration with Columbia. Again, I see that as being the surefire number one priority is strengthening our ties with Columbia there. Again, I'm biased, but I also have a lot of data to back that up. We'll get into that later. But the other thing was, you mentioned Bend, Oregon, and Sonora had the same population in the 1980s, which kind of blows me away, having been to Bend recently. The thing that, that gives me a lot of hope is I see us putting together a lot of those pieces right now that led to Bend being such kind of like this up and coming prosperous, formerly kind of backwater community that's now like a hub for a lot of major businesses. I think Hydro Flask might even be like, you know, the original, you know, reusable water flask. I think they're based out of Bend, Oregon.
Lots of baby as well.
Yeah, they're like, so I would love to see us things like Gold Rush Bike Path, more annexation, just infrastructure development. But again, the CTE thing is like, we, we gotta do that. Hopefully build some housing too.
My goal and what I think is recognizable in these objectives and action items is both easy wins, but also things that are going to take time, right? There's, there's no way to say that, considering an annexation, let's just run with it tomorrow, right? It's, it requires feasibility studies. It requires lots of extra work. Some sort of conversation or partnership between Columbia College and a larger Cal State University or UC system. It's a big ask, but it's one that because of the regional efforts that are going on, the priorities that Central Sierra Economic Development District, Sierra Jobs First have put forth and our location, both as one of the only cities in the Central Sierra to have an active rail line system that actually can deliver goods to the Stockton Port, actually has some fairly proximity to both the material and the place to, to remove it and then to ship. and then to ship it away. We have the location and then the proximity, both with Columbia College and the work they've already been doing in the natural resources. For me, it's a no-brainer, but again, I know it's a much bigger ask, but I think it's one, like you said, could absolutely work.
I was kind of thinking, when he was talking about training centers, that there's Big Lots and Joann's. I mean, there's these two massive buildings that would be great.
They need to be filled with something.
Locations, yeah, with plenty of parking. But, you know, I just, the presentation is much food for thought, but it was pretty overwhelming to me, I mean, in terms of 10 objectives and then all of the strategies underneath. Do you, do you plan to prioritize them?
Sure, yeah, I think...
For maybe like, you know, for the council to kind of comprehend all this. I mean, you know, once a year, you have a short-term and a long-term objective and you accomplish it.
So let me, yeah, so absolutely. So one of the things that I've tried to do in formulating the outline is exactly what you said, which is, in the objectives themselves, it's going to be a lot, clearly. Because like, if you give a step-by-step, but one of the things that we've kind of, or I've tried to deliver is not just a kind of overlap, because a lot of them do overlap. Like, if we're trying to create a tax revenue sharing policy, that'll really actually impact the business perspective, because it's a huge incentive. So again, they're kind of, they're interrelated. And so, yes, I think the quick scan table, the goal is that that quick scan table will allow you to say, okay, this is an immediate priority. These are things we should focus on first. And clearly, these things are going to take a longer term and are kind of slow burns. So yes, I do think there's ways to make this much more digestible, and I hope I can. And I'll come on the next one with like the quick scan table as a hope to say like, this is kind of the path forward.
Fabulous, okay. Any other questions for Cole?
Yes.
Now that your brain is exploding.
So, is this being presented just for us to ruminate on for further discussion in the future? Or were you looking for a specific direction on what we want to do or where we want to go tonight? Because it's getting kind of late-ish.
I would love to have the opportunity to start writing further in-depth a lot of the material. I think generally what I've seen is head nodding, so I have like 75% agreement. But one of the things I've discussed with staff is having a workshop. So inviting the community, because they're actually, again, surprisingly, when I, the last question is, would you want to participate in a workshop? I've gotten more emails than I think I know how to handle in one workshop in this room. So I think it's really a worthwhile effort to then say yes to both things, which is have the community event, early December is the goal, so that we could implement this starting in the beginning of the year. But that would also require, yeah, another opportunity to come back and share a little bit more.
Okay, because implicit in your presentation were some questions of direction. And that, I think, will end up being somewhat lengthier as well.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I know the easy wins, I know the things that I can start working on today and make sure that by the time we get to an early December workshop, I can confidently talk about like what's kind of branding, what we're looking at for the future, what kind of events would make sense or businesses. Again, the key things that the community members are looking for. And then come back, I guess that, that means mid-December or the first meeting of January, to essentially say, here's where we landed before we stamp it finished. Yeah, before we stamp a finish, this is the opportunity, last chance to say before we finish. So I can agree to that.
I like that approach, because I think that we, well, it's sort of overwhelming all at once.
Well, it's good to get a community stamp on moving forward.
I have one question, though. If we do a workshop for community outreach, is that including us?
I think that would only include one or two of you.
Okay, I was gonna say, because I don't want to eat brown egg violations.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we could all be present. It's just we most likely have to limit who could talk to, you know, to tops who's actually participating.
If we announced it and invited public comment for an hour, no, we can't, okay. For people who can't see, I'm looking at our city attorney.
I did want to mention, my neighbor is a Model A enthusiast, and there's quite an active Model A club here. And I wrote a letter, they're having a big confab in May, and he's expecting, at the fairgrounds. So maybe that's your first interconnection with a big event to see how it affects downtown and seeing people stay. But if you'd like his contact information, I'm happy to give it to you, because he, you know, he's expecting hundreds of Model A enthusiasts to converge on the, on the fairgrounds.
That would be something to include VTC in as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, yeah. So I mean, I'm happy to share his information, and I'm sure he would love the support for marketing his event.
Cool. Thank you, as always, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or members of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Any comments from the council on the items on the consent calendar? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. All right, seeing none, I just have one comment for our finance director. The, I missed the quarterly investment report. It's just unbelievable with $20 million, we can only get a 1% return. I was like, dong, 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 yeah, yeah, okay. So anyway, after that, all right. So seeing no objections or comments from public comment, anyone to comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve. I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0, and on to new business, where we will recognize and thank Administrator Melissa Eads for her service to the city of Sonora and join staff and community members for a brief break and celebration in her honor. Tracy Skelly, Administrative Services Office Clerk.
Our city administrator, Melissa Eads, has announced her departure from the city of Sonora. Her last day will be November 28th. During her tenure, she's provided dedicated leadership guiding the city through numerous projects and initiatives that have positively impacted our community. We would like for the, at this time, for the city council and the public to acknowledge Melissa, express their appreciation for her commitment and professionalism. And then, after council comments, we'll enjoy a short recess with some refreshments to celebrate Melissa.
No, comments from the council?
I figured I could let you have the floor.
All right, well, as mayor, under Melissa's administration, I've grown in both my, in both understanding of my council role and my commitment to the health and prosperity of the city. Her ability to nurture the teamwork from staff and council to deliver substantial civic improvements has been a true asset. And, you know, I've also appreciated Melissa's approachability, her, you know, very strategic thinking. You know, I've never been a strategic thinker, I'm really bad at games. And so, it's been, you know, a huge, a huge value to me, sitting as mayor, knowing that I have the support of a really strong city administrator, and she will be sorely missed. So, but I know the city administrator of Dixon is probably just so anxious to have her in there, moving and shaking so he can retire at some point. So I can see, you know, little Dixon may be the next Bend.
If Sonora doesn't be it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you, Melissa. I'm a firm believer, especially in myself, in playing devil's advocate. And I feel like the times, and I don't mean that as a slight at all. I can't tell you how many times, you know, just talking, you know, one-on-one and stuff and just brainstorming. It's been really nice to have someone that genuinely listens and gives honest feedback that isn't just there to be a yes man and give you the real deal, so to speak. And I've just always really respected that about you and your candor and straightforward answers to a lot of really difficult questions sometimes. So thank you for that.
So, Melissa, working with you has been a pleasure. For the community, Melissa has a very unique set of qualities or talents where she can respectfully push and sell ideas like a tax hike to people who are fundamentally against them when it's necessary. The, our chief, our chief of police helped a lot with that particular sales pitch as well, along with the need, but so, but you bring strategic, strategic thinking and a set of values and a vision of seeing things that most of us just stumble along not noticing. At the same time, unlike many visionaries, you work very well with people, and your staff has loved you, and you have gotten really the best out of them. The path that you have put Sonora on is probably the most significant of any individual in the last 20 or 30 years. And I look forward to us being sound. One of the things that we need to push is the, the economic growth and the use of Measure Y funds, which is something that I will try and remind the council of as long as I'm around. But it's going to change Sonora in 20 years and 40 years. So thank you very much for your service here, and you will be sorely missed.
Well, I'll just quickly say that it's been a pleasure to work with you and made my transition as a new council member, I think as seamless as it could have been. And you're always open to talk and explain things. I think that it always feels like there's no stupid questions and that we can just come to you and ask anything. And I really appreciate that, and you will be missed, but you are appreciated.
I'm gonna echo it. Beth said, you made it very easy to go from paying commission to city council. On top of that, every time I had a harebrained idea, I could just call you and then run it by you. And sometimes we could turn it into something that was good. And then other times it was like, I don't think we should really go, we could do this. And then that turned into a way better idea. So, thank you, Melissa, for being a sounding board at least, and for just being the best city administrator I've ever seen, because the, you know. No, the last one wasn't as nice to me. The last one didn't like you very much.
She's the best of, the best of them I've seen, too. So, no worries there, she is like, heads above.
I've worked with three different ones.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you've got...
Melissa outshines one of my very good friends, but it's, you're remarkable to work with.
Well, and I'm just looking forward to Chris carrying the baton and showing you up.
So I have here a certificate of appreciation.
Thank God. Can we all take a photo with you holding that up?
Of course.
Want to come my way or do you want me to go around?
Here, go right there. With the city seal there.
Right here? Okay.
Sonora?
Sonora.
Thank you.
That's my decision.
Oh, I knew that. Oh, I think now, now we adjourn for cake.
Thank you.
employment agreement, quote unquote, agreement with Christopher J. Gorski, class of 88, for 85, sorry, for city administrator position. Authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Sonora and approve the resolution number 11-17-2025-A. Doug White, city attorney.
All right, mayor and council, great to be with you here tonight. One of the perks of my job is I get to typically introduce the contracts for, you know, the incoming city managers. So, this is personally very exciting for me because I've had the opportunity to work with Chris, you know, since he joined the city in July of 2018. Just to give a little bit of brief background about what Chris has done here, he's been the administrative services director, which I don't know that that always, that title always gives a full description of all the responsibilities that carries with it. So, includes like HR, and he's the IT guy too, you know, and then finance. We tried to get him to give up the IT thing and contract that up, but he likes it too much. So, he does that. And then he's become the assistant city manager and worked really hand in hand with Melissa as a lot of these concepts and plans have been implemented, so forth and so on. So, with that, what we have before you is a contract for you to consider that would make Chris the city manager for the city of Sonora beginning December 1st of this year. We proposed a five-year contract for your consideration. It has a beginning salary of $185,000 with annual CPI and cost of living increases. It also has a $200 automobile allowance and other benefits that are similar to other employees in the city. Given that he's a contract employee, it does contain a 12-month severance for any termination without cause. And if he was to ever voluntarily, you know, resign from the position, he would have to give the city 90 days notice. You know, with that, happy to answer any questions that you have and, you know, excited to be able to present this contract to you for your consideration.
Questions or comments from the council?
Really just in line with one of the points I think Cole was trying to make is consistency is key. So, I'm really looking forward to keeping the train rolling with Chris on this one.
And I just want to say, no pressure, Chris, no pressure.
Of course, there's no pressure because he's up to the job or we wouldn't have picked him. So, I look forward to working with Chris and continuing much of the great work and projects that we have started over the last two councils.
Looking forward to, you know, continuing the momentum, you know, making Sonora stronger than ever. And, you know, Chris, lead on. So, anything for Beth? All right. Yeah. Okay. So, let me see here. I need a motion to approve.
We need to ask for public comment.
Public comment. Chris, would you like to comment?
Oh, I see. All right. All right.
He has to hold his congratulatory speech until after the congratulations are necessary.
Yes. All right. So, seeing no public comment, now I will ask...
I would probably like to approve the contract of Chris Gorski for city administrator.
I will second Mark's motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have comment from Mr. Gorski.
Just quickly, I wrote a few things. Well, thank you, mayor and members of the city council. I wanted to express my sincere appreciation for the trust and confidence you placed in me to serve as the next city administrator. It's an honor to take on this responsibility and to work alongside each of you, our department heads and our dedicated staff, to continue to move Sonora forward. Over the past seven years as administrative services director and assistant city administrator, I've gained an intimate understanding of the city's operations, challenges and opportunities. I'm fully committed to building on our successes and driving continued progress for the benefit of the community. I also want to take a moment to thank Melissa Eads for her leadership and her tireless work in reshaping the city's trajectory. Her vision and commitment have put Sonora on a stronger path, strengthening our fiscal foundation, enhancing organizational efficiency and elevating the services we provide to our residents. We are all beneficiaries of the progress made under her direction. And I look forward to building on that foundation. Thank you.
Well said.
Bravo and welcome.
Yes. Huzzah, huzzah. All right. Well, we can or cannot have council member reports. Is anybody, anyone enthused about giving their report?
Nothing new for me. I just had a yes council meeting. That was about it. That was pretty easy.
We already heard from the Tualpa County. So, I'm good.
Well, just don't forget, Christmas town is coming and we could use some help with decorating tomorrow. We decorated the opera hall on Sunday. And it looks magnificent, if I may say. But we will be doing Cawfle Park, Leinbergh, the fire museum, and I can't remember what else tomorrow. So, anybody under 50 with a ladder would be terrific.
Actually, I have experience doing that.
We'll be meeting at the Sonora Chamber at 9:00. And hopefully, everything will be beautiful by noon. So, that said, yeah, Christmas is coming. The parade is the 28th of November and of course, the lighting ceremony on 26th. So, hopefully, all council members will be able to participate and will show the community we're there for them. And I think that's it unless anyone else has...
I do just have a quick note because I feel like I haven't been able to report on a lot of committee meetings lately. Not too much going on at TCTC, other than the next unmet transit needs hearing will be on December 10th, 2025. We're working towards finally getting the overdue audits in check. So, I've been told that they'll be done within the next fiscal year and we're making progress on that. Solid waste, in case we need another pat on the back for moving forward, the county has no plans to get in compliance with, I think it's either AB 371 or SB 54 for poundage per person in terms of our amount that goes to the landfill. So, hopefully, we can get some more good data that gets us in compliance ahead of the game with that. So, we don't need an exemption. And then lastly, the big one, the homelessness committee met. We were off the previous month. And I just want to say, I think everyone in this room agrees that Camp Justice and its development has been a really good thing for the community over the last year. I think they're voting on whether to continue it tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So, if you would like to comment on that, and I'll be certainly giving my full, full volume support on continuing that project for now. I do have some actually really cool numbers, not related to the camp, but again, demonstrating the latter, so to speak, of people moving on from the camp. The Nav Center has been open for several months now. We've got 36 people currently in the navigation center, including 12 kids. So far, over the life that it's been open, we've served 84 people total, 28 children. 48 of those people, over half of those people, have completed the program and found permanent housing.